At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, show that all council members are in attendance and would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve with item 3B, minutes for September 2nd, 2015, as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion?
The only discussion I have is on 3E. I think this adaptive signal project is a great project to better regulate traffic flow on Cane'sville and hopefully remove some of the traffic from the 100 block of Broadway, which is always a challenge with people speeding through Broadway. So hopefully this study will alleviate some of that traffic.
And I want to thank, we're receiving and filing the library's annual report and I want to thank all the people at the library, particularly the dozens of volunteers throughout the year, who are really unsung heroes volunteering for their community and I don't think it thanked often enough, so thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's proclamation designating September 2015 as Kiari Malformation Awareness Month. City of Council Bluff, Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas Kiari malformation is a serious neurological disorder where the bottom part of the brain, the cerebellum, descends out of the skull and crowds the spinal cord, putting pressure on both the brain and the spine and disrupting the normal flow of spinal fluid and affects about 1 in 1,000 people. And whereas the most common symptom is severe headache, usually in the back of the head, and made worse by activities such as straining, coughing, sneezing, or bending over and can cause many additional symptoms, including balance problems, pain, and weakness in the arms and legs, and trouble speaking and swallowing. And whereas there is no single test to say whether someone should have surgery, and since many doctors are not familiar with the condition, many people go years without proper diagnosis. And whereas if symptoms are bad enough or getting worse, a decompression surgery is usually performed by a neurosurgeon. Surgery involves removing part of the skull and spine and sometimes sewing a patch into the natural covering of the brain. And whereas precise data is not available, about 50% of patients become symptom-free after surgery, another 20 to 30% improve significantly, and about 20% experience no relief or get worse. And whereas the cause of Kiari malformation is unknown, but scientists believe it is either a congenital condition caused by exposure to harmful substances during fetal development or that it can be a genetic condition, as it may appear in more than one family member. Therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bluff, does hereby proclaim September 2015 as Kiari Malformation Awareness Month in the City of Council Bluff, and I encourage all citizens to support education, awareness, and research to conquer Kiari. And I believe we have someone here to accept it. And if you want to, you can say something, but you don't have to. There you go, thank you. And thanks for bringing the awareness to the public. All right, we are on the public hearings. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-243 to vacate and dispose of a 16-foot wide by 580-foot long east-west alley, abutting lots 1 through 17, Block 9, Twin City Place and lots 1 through 13, Block 4, 9th Avenue Edition. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. 5B, this is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-244, approving the plan specification, form of contract, and cost estimate for the Dodge Riverside Clubhouse Parking Lot Reconstruction Project. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to address the council in regards to this matter? Seeing no one, what is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just to note that this is a $225,000 project, so I urge everybody to get in the car tomorrow morning and go play golf and do your civic duty for the city.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-245, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an underground electrical easement in connection with the utility relocation by Mid-America Energy Company. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? What is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-246, approving the plan specification, form of contract, and cost estimate for levy certification geotechnical MR1 project, fiscal year 15-06A. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone who would wish to address the council on this matter? What is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I did receive one phone call on this, but it was a positive one. Somebody that wanted to let me know that they really enjoy that park, they're down there all the time, and they think that what's being built down there is really going to add to Council Bluff's, and we're very much in favor of it, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-247, granting final plat approval for a three-lot subdivision to be known as Rivers Edge Subdivision Replat 1. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Both this resolution about the Rivers Edge subdivision and the previous one about levy certification really deal at bottom with improving our river and continuing to add investment, needed investment, in the West End of Council Bluff to keep it from flooding and to have it have fantastic things for people to go to and to see, and it is our front door, and it's something that is very much needed, and I very much support
Noted that these two projects are somewhat tied together. The cost for the last project is roughly $1.36 million. That's for just that portion of the levy. I previously stated my concerns about the project overall, but what concerns me is that this money being used for levy purposes, while the levy strengthening is absolutely necessary, concerned about this much money on a single project coming out of local option sales tax money at a time when we have so many other improvements. Nonparel noted all the street improvements that need to be done at this point, so I'm somewhat concerned about this amount of money being put against a single project.
It is a lot of money, but we must get the levy certified. The alternative is the majority of the residents in the city will have increased costs to buy flood insurance. It's just a project that has to be done for the safety of our city.
Well, and if it's not done, if the levy is not repaired, residents of the City of Council Bluff from 8th Street West will be remapped into a flood zone and will pay the true actuarial costs of the flood insurance, which will far exceed their mortgage payment. And so those houses from 8th Street West of Council Bluff would be technically rendered valueless. And so if we don't spend the money to fix the levy, that would be the net effect.
Just to be clear, I did vote for that resolution for the levy work.
Yeah, no, I know.
And so I didn't want there to be any confusion out there about that.
But you inexplicably correlated that to the cost of the Rivers Edge subdivision.
Well, it was my understanding from the explanation, the technical explanation today, that additional reinforcement was done because of the particular development project there. And I understand the need for that, but I do have concerns about the replat, and I've stated my reasons for that previously.
I want to make sure I understand what we did with the last. My understanding was the levy that we're repairing that was in the last motion was the levy over by the golf course, not over on this side. And I believe that was just still part of the things that needed to be done per the evaluation of the levies. This is just more work towards getting them certified, so one really has nothing to do with the other, except that it will make it safer for all of Council Bluffs if we do this, and again, keep your costs down. And lastly, we know we need to do road repairs, but the bottom line is, if we don't do this and we do have a levy fail, you know, what's the cost of that? What's the cost to our residents for peace of mind that live down there, close to that levy, or live in that area that would then have to have flood insurance? You can't put a price on that. So, you know, as far as the Rivers Edge subdivision, these are the things that we are going to have to continue to move forward with to add value to the tax rules, to be able to keep the services that we're providing to the residents of Council Bluff without raising the taxes. You know, these are the type of projects that will do that. And yes, it takes an initial investment, but the long range is, is that that then would be of a very big benefit to the residents of Council Bluff.
I just again want to be clear that I'm not suggesting that the levy work not be done, not in the least. It must be done. What concerns me again is the fact that we are taking these funds out of local option sales tax funds, and when the ballot was initially approved by the voters, that was not the intention, and I realize that the reasons why that's being done, I just want to make sure that folks out there are clear as to the source of funding.
When the ballot was taken out, it was to mitigate flooding, and certainly it's no stretch to think that levy repair that mitigates flooding is a direct correlation to what the voters had intended when they passed the ordinance.
And we spent time to research that issue to confirm that we were on the right track.
Indeed, it also included quite a bit of language about sewer systems. I remember that phrase in particular. If the levy is not part of the system to remove water away, which is the definition of sewer or other substances, I'm not sure what is. I do know that that money, a road is definitely not a sewer system, so even if we didn't spend it on the levy, I don't see how we could legally spend it on the roads. I do appreciate, the roads do need work, and the state increased the gas tax, and we'll be getting a little over a million more in the next fiscal year to help pay for that. So out-of-state people, which is over half the interstate traffic, will be paying for the roads as they should. But we have to do it. You know, a lot of people don't realize that the West End, people will say it's in a flood plain. It actually isn't technically because there's a levy to protect it. The only parts of Council Bluff's in a flood plain currently are because of the two creeks. For example, North 8th Street, Minster, the Cane'sville-Tenley neighborhood, they're in a flood plain not because of the river, but because of Indian Creek. If we don't fix our levies and don't meet the heightened modern federal standards, which are 1953 levies, especially 100 days underwater, certainly don't meet, the whole West End of Council Bluff, not only will flood insurance go up, but you'll be lucky if you can get it, and good luck getting a mortgage. So there'll be over 30,000 people who, as the mayor said, their house will be worth nothing. And if it fails, your house will be anywhere from about half a block from here, you'll start to be a foot underwater. That's why Council Bluff's is four miles in from the river, because the river originally came to right here, and it will again if those levies don't work. And it'll be as deep as 14 to 17 feet deep in parts of the West End, who are actually lower than the river level itself. We have to pump it uphill to get it into the river, and those have to go 24/7. We must do these things. They're expensive, I appreciate the cost, but it's no good having great roads if they're under 17-foot of water.
I'm glad we approved the construction then.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. I have extreme pressure here because two weeks ago, Marcy Warden read this without an error.
That's right.
And so I'm going to make an attempt, but I don't know that I'm going to get through it. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Ordinance 6242, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.27.010B by rezoning property legally described as beginning at the northwest corner of Lot 1 Hawkeye Heights subdivision in said City of Council Bluff. Said point of beginning being the east right-of-way line of East Cane'sville Boulevard, thence along said east right-of-way line, north 32 degrees, I don't even know how to say this, 05...
Minutes and seconds.
Minutes and 32 seconds, east 300 feet, thence south 56 degrees, 36 minutes 10 seconds east, 346, now failed, 346.83 feet, then south 2 degrees, 10 minutes 9 seconds west, 353.18 feet, to the point of the north line of said Lot 1, thence along said north line, north 56 degrees, 22 minutes 29 seconds west, 523.11 feet, to the point of beginning located in the City of Council Bluff, Potawatomi County, Iowa, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District, as defined in Chapter 15.10. Is proof of publication, we've got that, is proof publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is why meets in bounds should be banned forever. Jesse's street address. Good job, though.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of... Okay.
Motion to waive third?
Second.
Yeah. The motion is to waive third consideration. Any discussion?
We haven't had anybody speak in opposition to it, and seeing as you would have to read it again if we went to a third.
Appreciate it, thank you.
For the motion.
Indeed.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Ordinance 6243, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.000 by rezoning property located at 1211 and 1215 South 3rd Street, legally described as a south 23 feet of Lot 2 and the north 23 feet of Lot 3, Block 11, Williams 1st Edition, along with the north 46 feet of Lot 2, Block 11, Williams 1st Edition, from C2 Commercial to R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential, as defined in Chapters 15.15 and 15.10. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? And I believe we need a roll call vote.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Oh, sorry, is there a mo... Any discussion? And we need a roll call vote.
White?
Aye.
Brannigan?
Epstein.
Ed?
Aye.
Ringenberg?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye. Motion to waive third.
Second.
And once again, we'll need a roll call vote. Or is discussion on that?
White?
Aye.
Brannigan?
Epstein.
Ed?
Aye.
Ringenberg?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
All right.
Resolution...
Clerk?
Resolutions, Resolution 15-248, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with TJ Cable and Underground Services for the Fiber Conduit Relocation Project FY16-15B for the 23rd Avenue and South Expressway and 7th Street under IAS and BNSF railroads.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Resolution 15-249, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cave Contracting for the Broadway Shelter Improvement Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
This is, as far as I'm aware, and I'd love to be proven wrong about this, it's the last building standing of the Omaha Council Bluff's Trolley Company, which was the original public transportation in this town, and before the automobile was the quickest way of getting around, unless I suppose you had a fast horse. But it's the very last building. It's sat derelict for years right next to the skate park, and I can be a bit of a purist myself when it comes to historic buildings, but I recognize that buildings to stick around have to have a modern purpose so that people will use them. So this is going to repurpose that structure, keep it around for hopefully at least another century. And in the summer, working together with the school district, is going to provide a place for kids who otherwise may not get lunch to have a good lunch in a good environment. And I can't think of a better use of that public building and to keep it around for a good use in the 21st century.
And I would just like everybody to know that this is a really good example of public-private partnership. This is being done with funds from the city, the school district, and also grants from the Arby's Foundation, the Iowa West Foundation. So I just really wanted to take an opportunity to thank those foundations for being a part of this, and I'm really excited to see this building being saved, and the purpose it's being used for is just wonderful with the lunches for the children during the summer. So again, thank you.
Mr. Watson noted, this building has been there for some time, and it's unlikely to get up and leave anytime in the near future. The construction costs associated with this have grown considerably over the past months, but the outside contributions have not. And part of the, much of the reason attributed to the increased cost of this was the fact that there's so much construction going on in the city right now, and that's accelerated the cost of many projects. The fact that there's a lot of construction going on in the city is a good thing, except when it increases costs to the taxpayers. While I supported this initially, I'm thinking perhaps it would be wise for the taxpayers if we deferred this a short period of time to where those building costs can come down and we can get a little bit more bang for the buck.
Well, that's a good opinion. We have seen a lot of increased bids on various projects, and I've questioned those in past meetings, and the answer that was always given to me is, just given the nature of the construction industry right now, there is absolutely no guarantee that a rebid would result in a lower price and often times would result in a higher price because the construction environment is going to continue booming, and that's a good thing, but it's also a bad thing. So I would lump this in with the other projects that we've heard the same thing, that if you wait, costs may go up, and I don't want to take that risk.
I think Council and Ringenberg raise is an excellent point about costs, and we must always look for those. At the same time, with these projects, something goes up a reasonable percent, and it's because local folks have work. If I have to pick between the two, I'll take it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Nay.
Resolution 15-250, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Ophir Waesaki Architecture for Architectural Engineering and Related Services in connection with the needs assessment and site selection for a new police headquarters building.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Had some good discussion earlier today about needs for the facility. I think there's universal agreement that this facility is very much needed, not only for the community, but also for our defenders in blue, and so I'm supportive of this, and I look forward to the work of these contractors as they set out to find some cost-effective options for this. CIP, Capital Improvement Program, right now notes anticipated cost of about $20 million for this project. So I look forward to their work on this to make sure that we do as effective a job as possible.
I just want to say I concur in those remarks. I don't think I can improve on them.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Resolution 15-251, authorizing and directing the city attorney's office to act on behalf of the mayor and city council regarding the inspection of the Mid-America Center by the United States Department of Justice.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Had some questions, emails and a call asking, what the heck is this all about? And I guess to make somewhat of analogy, you ever notice those letters that you get from the IRS from time to time, and they say, hey, your taxes seven years ago, you did something online, 33N, that we don't like, explain yourself? And that's kind of what's going on here, is Department of Justice, way after the fact, is coming in and asking the City of Council Bluff to explain things that the city did in good faith and that we felt that we proceeded correctly, and now there's a difference of opinion, and they're after us. Thank you, big government. And so just like folks who have to defend themselves from the federal government from time to time, so does the city, and this authorizes our professionals in the legal department to take this on and work with the Justice Department to try and come up with a resolution. with a resolution that best meets the interests of the taxpayers. So to you, Mr. Wade, I say good luck and good hunting.
And just so everyone's clear about, well, the specific subject about which the Federal Department of Justice is looking is, it's, this particular federal mandate is the Americans with Disabilities Act, and they're just double-checking to make certain that there are enough places with people who happen to be physically disabled can come enjoy the same events you and I can. Is our facility perfect? No. But I would be dumbfounded if you could find a perfect facility anywhere. Is ours pretty good? Yes, as even the DOJ has said, and there are a few things that could be better, and we're working with them, and I think it's a sensible strategy rather than trying to fight them, because you can't win against the federal government, and in the end, we'll have something that's even slightly better for people who, so they can come to the events. So I don't much enjoy that it's happened either, but it could be much worse, and it's for something that is ultimately a good thing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-252, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Compass Utility LLC for the Valley View Lane Sewer Extension.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-253, rejecting all bids and authorizing the city clerk to re-advertise for the bids for the Council Bluffs Athletic Complex Sewer Manhole Relocations Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations 7A 1 through 5.
Motion to approve 7A 1 through 5 inclusive.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens requesting to be heard?
None received.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Bruce Nauman, address for the record.
Bruce Kelly, 864 Mckinsey Avenue. I just keep reminding you.
Bike trail.
Bike trail. I just want to keep it on your mind. I don't know if there's any progress or anything's been done about it.
Thank you.
Your persistence is admirable.
I don't disagree, we need one there to connect the two, and I hope we can do it sooner rather than later, but no progress in the last two weeks, though.
I've been there for 36 years, and I've seen a lot of people walking in, closing in on the way they're getting there.
Yeah.
In the highway.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, we're adjourned. Thank you. Have a great week.
The Mid-America Center is the Heartland's premier entertainment and convention center. September 27th, Papa Roach and headliner five-figure death punch, Rock Council Bluffs. Then Rock Opera takes the stage with the return of TSO, November 18th. Over at the convention center, over 200 exhibitors are on hand at the Callahan Craft Show, and October 18th, vendors aspire to inspire at the Wedding Essentials Idea Show. Remember, the MAC offers free parking for all events. Tickets, information, and more at midamericacenter.com.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get personalized customer service like nowhere else, like our travel club.
Come see us, bank with us, and travel with us. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.